Good. According to my phone. When Braden comes in, we'll have him adjust. All right. Vannick County Commissioners are in session. We have some deletions from our agenda, but no additions, so we'll just get started. First item on our agenda is Commissioners' invoices, Commissioners' report, credit applications, and credit reports. So I don't have any questions myself.
Mr. Chair, I approve that we approved the invoices as presented through the Commissioner's report.
We have motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. I texted Wes on this ham radio, so he answered me and let you know. We got the production line going this morning.
Well, that was pretty simple. That's where our business part of it, there isn't anything else on there. Paying bills.
Going to do the CAT agreement while...
Sure.
That shouldn't take very long.
Yep. All right. Kyle.
Dylan. General one of them.
That's why you come early.
Do the CAT thing while we wait.
Okay.
Perfect.
Kyle Brumster, Public Works Director.
Dylan Evans, Landfill Manager.
On your agenda that you have a contract for a new compactor at the landfill, there's some issues with that that we're working out, so we don't really want anything signed today, but we would like to talk about it a little bit. We caught the other day that that is with a five-year, 5,000 hour, and there's no way we can have that low hours on this lease. We're putting 7,000 per unit in five years, and we have two compactors. So this bigger compactor is going to help lessen the load and stuff like that, but not that. We can't do something like that right now.
Are we trading one of the two in on this?
Yeah, so one of the smaller units, we've already, it's been returned to CAT. So where it was at is with the five-year, 7,000 stuff, we were right at, well, we're at 7,200 and something hours. So there's no equity in it. We've pretty much ran the lease, did what we said we were going to do, and it got returned.
So no trade-in value?
So there's no trade-in value. Where this one would be is if we went with what it states, what you have, we would probably, what we were looking at is we'd get into our fourth year and be over hours.
Be in trouble.
So we contacted them, said, "Well, what if that happens? Where would we be at?" So that year, they would want us to catch up, which would be close to $100,000 that year. With the new contract, we're looking at $20,000 more than what we originally thought. So from a hundred...
Per year?
Per year lease agreement. What that covers is the added hours and the GPS systems that we run on them, that run the grade control and all that for ourselves and the lift programs we run. Ours is getting out of date, and we didn't get kind of that information until we started looking at switching it over, because the new one has shown up, and so we're getting ready to look at moving that equipment. So that equipment's $35,000. So that's added to this other contract, too, so that's part of the 20,000 more per year, too, is we'd have a brand-new GPS system, which our other one is about eight years old. It still can work in certain ways, so we can still utilize the equipment. We could probably have it mounted on to a dozer or something, so we'd have more usage for it, but the compactor is the heart of the landfill. It's where the bread and butter is. That's why we're really excited to have this new, bigger machine, because for compaction, that airspace is our goal, our money. With the compactors, the weights that they are right now, we can run over it as many times as we want, but it'll only compact to a certain level for that weight. With this bigger compactor, that's where we're going to gain this money from this added expense, from the big, large payment, which it's a large payment. That's where we're going to gain some of this back is in our airspace.
Do you have any projections of what the airspace, the additional, or the differences between the two airspaces would be?
Caterpillar guarantees 10%, but likely to be higher than that.
So what, from a monetary standpoint, what does 10% mean to us?
Oh, we'd have to look at what the last year's projection was, and we can go off of that for our total tonnage, and then multiply the airspace out, but it would be a pretty sizable amount, considering 310 room days a year.
What, just so I can start to wrap my head around it, what is, what is a cubic foot of airspace, whatever, what's that worth to us?
Well, they typically go off cubic yards, and it would be 1,400 pounds per yard, what we're at currently, so 10% additional on top of that.
So it'd be up to 1,600-ish?
Mm-hmm. So yeah, they go off of, you take what it costs to build the cell, and they have an estimated at this many pounds of compaction, this is how many years you have, and then you divide that, and that's what you're paying. So if we can get 10% or better of that, that just pushes us out longer and saves, it could save, you know, a lot of money.
So our cell expansion was 5 million, 6 million?
I'd have to look, because we've spread it over so many years.
But that was the general price?
Yeah.
Will the, will this compactor cut down on the usage of your other smaller one?
Yes. You should be able to do all the work with this size one, but you do have downtimes and different things like that, so we can utilize the smaller one for if we take it to another cell and utilize it, or utilize it with this one in busy times, and if this is down for service. The scary part, if you only have one, is what do you do when you're down?
Right.
Our objective is to see how this one handles it throughout this year, to see how brave we were, would be with only one, or are still having the two, or still leaving that, we would still need that second one, but we don't exactly know yet.
What's our lease payment on the second one?
Second one's about 49,000 a year, and it has one more, I think it's due in '26, fiscal year '26 is when its lease is done. So we'll have, we have it on lease right now, so we'll get some time to be able to look and see what best works with us.
What's the difference in maintenance costs on the smaller one versus this big one?
I think they're actually pretty similar. It has an efficiency rating for the fuel consumption and the services. It's basically the same parts and pieces. I think it's probably a little bit more, bigger reservoir, more oil, things like that, but I think they're, they're actually fairly comparable as far as the service cost goes.
So only a real cost savings comes from the space compaction? Nothing else?
It, it's hard, because we're kind of in the middle of how much waste is coming in, so it's kind of like the generators up there. We have two engines, and we're at that point of is it more cost-effective to run two or one? You're, like we had discussed, you're still having to push the garbage out, and it's not like you can do a half-a-day's work and then be done with it. There's, there's still complications in how the garbage comes in, but you will lessen on your fuel consumption and your man-hours.
Does our, does our garbage consumption increase about that same rate? Are we increasing our garbage consumption 10% a year, 20% a year?
I don't think it's quite that high. I think the engineers estimate 3.5%, which we're probably a little higher than that. I'd say probably 5% increase per year.
So in my dumb guy math, we'd be gaining about a 5% increase over what we're taking in. So with our compaction, we would tend to be gaining a 5% increase.
It would help with the trend and, yeah, give us a little extra time.
And it's kind of multifaceted, too. If you, 10% more time on a lift, let's say, then that's 10% time before we have to fire up the scraper, which operates at like $200 an hour to cover it. So it kind of extends that out, compounds a little bit towards the future, too.
Okay.
Okay. So our plan is to get this put together and come back with it corrected.
All right. Thank you.
And next?
No.
No, don't want to do it?
Maggie. Come on up. Maggie, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sunshiny.
Yes.
Which is nice. So I wanted to talk with you today just to provide some updates on a couple of different programs that we provide to the citizens of Vannick County as well as the rest of our district. So I'd like to talk about Give Kids a Smile, which is one component of our oral health program, also Women's Health Check, and our diaper bank. So I'm going to start with Give Kids a Smile. You may or may not know that tooth decay is one of the most common chronic conditions that kids experience, and if it's left untreated, it can result in pretty extreme pain and infection that can become pretty serious. And we know that when kids have untreated decay and that related pain, it leads to problems with eating, with learning in school, and it's a significant contributor to school absences. So while we do preventive work on a day-to-day basis with like fluoride varnish and dental sealants and oral health education, once a year, we partner with dentists and dental hygienists in our community as well as the dental residency and dental hygiene program at ISU. And we hold a one-day event, it's usually the first Saturday in February, where kids can come and receive dental care that is done on a volunteer basis by senior dental hygiene students from ISU and dentists in the area. So we've done this program, or had this day for years now, as long as I think I've been at the health district. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, since that was just last month. So we saw 84 kids on that one day. Of those, 54 kids were referred to follow, for follow-up because they had more extensive need for treatment than we were able to provide at that one clinic. That's the biggest number of kids that we've ever had to refer for follow-up, interestingly. We had six community dentists volunteering at the event, and we have an additional 20 who participate in the follow-up that we refer kids for, so a total of 26 area dentists. We had seven registered dental hygienists that volunteered, and 60 dental hygiene students who volunteered at the event. The dollar value of the services that were provided on that one day was $27,197, and we estimate that the follow-up care will be valued around another $25,000. And just as one example, we had one little four-year-old that had decay really on every tooth in her mouth, and it was so advanced that she needed to be sedated to be treated. And a local dentist, Dr. Morgan at Sugar Bugs, donated her care, or her, her part of the restoration of that child's mouth, and so did the Skyline Surgery Center. They also donated their facility so that that child could have her mouth taken care of. So it's a great program, it's a great partnership with community dentists and with ISU, and we're just, we're really grateful to have that resource in our community so that we can put this on once a year.
What's the age group that you're seeing with those kids?
Um, most of them are like preschool, elementary, middle school age. We don't typically have high school-aged kids that participate.
Most of those kids at that age, isn't that a result of like nursing bottle carries or something like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the younger kids, yes. So like, and that's why we try to do a lot of education through like our WIC program and our oral health program about how it's really important not to put baby to bed like with a bottle of juice or soda, things like that, that can sit on those teeth and cause decay overnight. And we also do a lot of education about how the bacteria that cause decay can be passed from parent to child. A lot of people don't have that understanding. So we do a lot of education around not, about parents, like, not like tasting baby's food and then using the same spoon to, to feed the child with because the bacteria can transfer in that way. So we do quite a bit of education around that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about that? Okay. So the next program I want to talk about is Women's Health Check. Women's Health Check is a breast and cervical cancer screening program for women who either don't have any health insurance or whose health insurance doesn't provide for annual screening like mammography or cervical cancer screening. So I want to give you a little bit of historical information and then share the data from just the last year. So this program went into effect on July 1st of 1998, so 25 years, it's been in place a long time. The funding for that has kind of waxed and waned over time. Some years, we've had pretty sizable grant funding to do that program. Other years, it's been kind of on the decline. So in that period, we've served 8,383 women, and that's an average of 335 per year. Of those, 7,287 or 87% were Vannick County residents. Through those screenings, we detected 150 cases of cancer. 90, 90 of those were breast cancer and 60 were cervical cancer. Virtually 100% of those women have been connected to resources to help them access more regular health care, whether it's through the Bochata Free Clinic, or Health West, or our clinics. And a total of 21,846 procedures were performed by participating providers. Those include 13,853 mammograms and 7,993 cervical cancer screenings. So in the last fiscal year that we have complete data for, we served a total of 69 women. 53 of those were Vannick County residents, or 77%. We provided 61 mammograms and 114 cervical cancer services, so that's more than the number of participants, because some of those women have to be referred for follow-up procedures if, if any kind of abnormality is detected. We detected one can, one case of breast cancer and two cases of cervical cancer. And again, 100% of those women were referred for resources. So any questions about that? No. Okay. So then I'd like to talk with you about our diaper bank. Our diaper bank is something that is funded and operates 100% on donations, so we don't use any grant funding or county funding to operate this program. We've had it in place since 2018, and during that time, that timeframe, we have distributed 213,430 diapers to 5,660 children. And part of the reason that we do this is that lots of families in our communities can't afford to purchase diapers. They're pretty expensive. If you, if you haven't bought them in a while, they're pretty pricey. And so we take monetary donations and also diaper donations. We do a couple diaper drives every year. Our most recent one was on Valentine's Day, and we partnered with Fred Meyer to do that. So we were there from about 10:00 in the morning till 6:00 PM, and during that time, we had a total of 2,196 diapers that were donated, along with $556.71 in cash donations. And then we can use that cash to purchase diapers at a really reduced rate. So we distribute those in packs of like 25 to our WIC clients and any other people who come in and have need of those. So any questions about that?
It's a good program.
Yeah, we feel like it is. It's having a very direct positive impact on people. So, and then I just wanted to say a big thank you, thank you to Emma Iannacome. She's been a wonderful partner as we get ready to head into Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we are on Saturday, April 6th, having a family fun event at the Museum of Clean. Thank you for that suggestion at our last board meeting, Commissioner Moser. They're going to have a bunch of activities and community resources and prize drawings and that kind of thing, and it should just be a fun day to kind of kick off that month. So again, big thank you to Emma, and my understanding is you all are signing a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month at the start of the month, so we're very appreciative of that as well.
So on these programs, like the diaper program and the childhood, the dental, how do you advertise for that? How do you get that out there to people so that...
Yeah, so we do a number of things. We do a lot through social media, so on our webpage and also Facebook, Instagram, so we do promotions through that, because that's free.
Do you use TikTok?
We do not. We do not use TikTok. We have never used TikTok. I'm happy to say. Although unfortunately, that's probably a really good way to reach people. We also do some advertising in like the Idaho State Journal, on local radio, and then we, like with Give Kids a Smile, we have flyers that go home to parents and, and an informational letter, and we target schools that have over 50% of their student population that are on free or in reduced lunch, and so we get information directly to parents that way. Yeah.
I still remember taking that little red peel when I was in grade school.
Mm-hmm. And chewing it.
Then I need half of a dentist or whatever.
Yep. To show you how, what you were missing while you were brushing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So any questions I can answer for you?
Good.
John?
No.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate you coming by.
Thanks, babe.
Yep. Have a great day.
You, too. Shanda?
Shanda Gossel, Chief Repairment Officer. Sorry. Here with an update for the board. We start at the top with the Rodham Bridge magnesium chloride. I have submitted a piggyback off of Power County Highway District contract for legal review. Once that has been approved, we'll move forward with contracting and get them ready to go now that apparently second spring has now arrived. We move to the Commissioner's Sixth Street Entrance renovation. That has been delayed just a week. As we talk and discuss the best way to move forward with that project, we want to make sure that we're following all of Idaho Code, obviously, and making sure that we're moving forward as efficiently as possible for ARPA is our next concern there. We have settled on moving forward with a design bid build, which means we're going to go out for a request for proposals for a general contractor on that project. But I should have a draft there for Dan to review here. I'm hoping by Friday, but you never know how the next two days are going to go, so, but that's my hope, is to have that sent down by then for review. If we drop down to Public Works for road trips, we have been, we're finalizing that draft. We have made a little bit of a difference. We matched a lot of the state contract for the specification for the road trips, but we do want to leave open to potential other material that's going to work for us, so we're reworking those specs just a little bit to give us a few more options and the companies that supply that material and hopefully get a better price for us as well. But we do anticipate that going live on Friday. If we drop down to the Event Center Grand Standard placements, Scott has moved forward with that. The lumber is ordered, it should be arrived here on Friday, and they've also began demo on that as well. So that's moving forward and should be completed by the time of their first rodeo, or no major hiccups as they move forward. And the last one is the Commission Architectural Services, that being in a request for proposal, excuse me, a request for qualifications. We have received the hourly rates from the top-rated architect on that program, and they've been sent out to the evaluation team just this morning to look and review, to make sure that, see if there's any concerns, questions. We'll move forward with those negotiations, but I am hoping to have a contract before the board next Tuesday, so those projects can move forward as well. Are there any questions?
On this grand standard, I did have a conversation with Scott last night, and part of this is getting an area lift, and I told him to go ahead and get that. Get it for one week for $1,500, or two weeks for $3,000, or a month for $3,000. I says, "We'll get it for the month and get, get this project done." That's part of, part of what we agreed with.
We did talk about not paying for that through ARPA, though, because it is going to be used for multi-things, so he felt he could cover that through his department budget yesterday when I talked to him.
I just, I just put through ARPA. I mean, he's going to use, he may use it off and on in other areas, but major project is, is for this. I mean, and I'm having it for the, the month. I mean, it's going to take him the month to, to do the project. And while it's on-site, they can use it for other things, but the use of the, of it is for ARPA or for this project. That's, that's why I, I mean, we're looking for money to spend, and if he can utilize it on something else, but it, but the project is, that's what it's there for, in my opinion.
Is that problematic with your reporting?
It doesn't matter overall with whatever's given to me.
Well, I just figured it's part of the whole project.
We, we talked about it, he thought he had money, but if he turns to choose, chooses to turn it in as ARPA, it turns in as ARPA.
Okay. And that, that was a discussion I had with him, too. It's part of the project, is what I, if he's going to divide out hours, that's going to create more work for you and for, I mean, both ways.
Well, and that's why we were going to pay it is just under the regular budget, because that does fall into the expenditure category of a certain purpose, but that's my, you guys said that.
Well, we have 125,000 is what we put in ARPA funds for it.
And actually, we reduced that a little bit.
And we're going to come in way under that, in my opinion.
Yeah.
So I says, "Yeah, utilize it." I mean, spend the money, get it done, and if you use it in other projects in between, good for you.
Just use it on that project.
That's what it's for. It's, that's the whole project.
Just use it on that project.
Yeah. That's what I call it. So just so we're all on the same page. So, just so we're all on the same page.
I don't have anything else further for the board.
All right. Go ahead and come back up. Let's talk about the landfill. Got all your files here?
Come on. So the Commission, Kyle Burkholder, Public Works Director, Commission asked for some updates. We've finally got enough data put together that we have Camza McBeth with CDM Smith. She is the Practice Lead Environmental Remediation. And also Adrienne Mead, Project Management for the CDM team with, that is working on and on the remediation. And they're going to update where we're at.
Do you have a presentation? Can we put it up on?
There was the two. All right. It's all yours. Feel like we need some opening credit music or something.
Maybe while that's loading, it takes a little bit. So, I'm gonna talk about the groundwater remediation project that's been ongoing at the landfill for about the last 20 years or so. This is a project that is been implemented under consent order from Idaho DEQ to address contaminants of concern or leaching from the historical cell one area into the groundwater. And in the early 90s, they discovered that there was contamination in the city of Pocatello's municipal supply well, not triggered an investigation which tracked that contamination back to leaching contaminants from the cell one area. So Bannon County is working under a consent order, and they have a compliance agreement scheduled with Idaho DEQ. And the overarching goal is to address the leaching of contaminants from the landfill and remediate the groundwater contamination to protect the lower Portent Valley aquifer, which is the sole source aquifer for most people in Pocatello area. So, today we've done a lot in 2024. It was kind of a pivotal year in terms of the remediation program. Historically, this county had installed a pump and treat system. If we look at this map here, you can see this area. This is this old unlined portion of the landfill, that's cell one. That area is about 63 acres, and there was about a million tons of waste that were disposed in that area. It was capped in the 90s. But you can see here, the red outline represents the extent of chlorinated solvent contamination. So essentially, it's sort of funneling down through Fort Hall Canyon where the road is going up to the landfill, then discharges out into the Snake River Plain Aquifer here, and then goes north towards Pocatello. The pump and treat system that was installed in the early 2000s really failed to contain the plume. And so that's one of the things that's been our primary objective, is to address those deficiencies and look for alternatives that are more cost-effective for Bannon County to cut off the contamination. And last year, we're gonna go through sort of the performance where we're required to continue to operate that system until we find something that's better. So I'll go through some of the results of the work we've been doing to continue operation of the pump and treat system. But we've also been really looking at other alternatives. And last year was a pivotal year in that we are actually evaluating an approach where we can treat the contamination in the ground. So rather than having to pump it up above ground and treat it and then discharge it, we're looking at approaches to actually degrade it or use some biological and abiotic degradation processes to degrade those contaminants in situ. So we did a pilot last year where we injected some amendments adjacent to the landfill to try to intercept the contaminant plume leaching and degrade contaminants and prevent the discharge. So we've got some results. I'll go through that. And then last, I'll go through, of course, the biggest concern is really that the contaminant plume is, is affecting off-site private potable wells. And the county has been implementing an ongoing program to evaluate those contaminant impacts and with, again, the objective of really retracting the plume so that we are no longer impacting those off-site wells. So first, with the remediation system performance, the remediation system was designed to include extraction or pumping wells shown in red. They sort of transect, if you look here, this is the county buildings at the landfill. This is the road going up to the landfill. So the contaminant plume migrates through sort of the throat of this valley, and these wells are intended to pump the groundwater above ground to, there's a treatment building here, and then discharge the treated water down into an injection well that's adjacent to the stormwater pond. We have been operating and kind of optimizing the system performance to try to get the most we can out of the system that's there. You can see here that this chart on the bottom has the flow rates, either the pumping rates. The system typically operates anywhere from 20 to about 40 GPM, depending on the water table elevations. In the spring, it's higher because you get snow melt, things that are infiltrating into the ground. In the fall and winter, it's lower as the water table comes down. This is the annual flow rates in blue, and then this is the mass of contamination in orange. Since we started operating the system in about late 2018, early 2019, we have been able to consistently improve the, while we're getting similar pumping rates, we've been optimizing it so we're getting better mass removal rates. And that continued through last year where we were able to improve the mass removal rate overall. But again, the system is inefficient for a variety of reasons. This, the subsurface environment and the aquifer here are relatively complex, and the sediments in the aquifer system that has contamination is not well-suited in some areas to being able to pump it out of the ground. And so the pilot study that we implemented is to use a technology called in-situ bioremediation. So if we look here, this is sort of a conceptual diagram of how it works. So you have your source area, which in our case is the landfill. What we're trying to do is inject amendments shown in black here, and we're using a slurry of zero valent iron and different kinds of carbon amendments that are intended to create what we call a barrier. But it's a permeable barrier, so we're not trying to physically restrict groundwater flow. We're actually trying to get groundwater to flow through this area because those amendments stimulate microorganisms and also the ZBI itself does an abiotic reduction. And we're trying to take the contaminants here. This is trichloroethylene. It's a solvent. It's one of the primary contaminants of concern that's leaching. And this reductive process actually breaks down this chemical ultimately to ethane and then carbon dioxide and water. So we're breaking the, the contaminant apart, essentially doing, if you wanna think of it like how our wastewater treatment plants treat our sewage, we're basically doing the same thing to treat these contaminants in the ground. So we injected, this is sort of a cross-sectional view. So again, here, here's the landfill buildings. If you sort of take a slice down the valley and look into the ground, this is the contaminant plume here. So what we're doing is installing bore holes, and then we're doing injections of these amendments into the subsurface, again, to try to intercept the contaminants and, and stimulate degradation. We also last year did some tracer testing that would allow us to understand the transport pathways and also help us in design. Ultimately, we're looking at moving this system into a remedial alternatives evaluation to look at either replacing the pump and treat system, and the tracer testing will give us some hydraulic parameters to help us with that alternatives evaluation and in the design. So these are just some pictures of the amendment slurry injections that we did last spring in April, almost exactly a year ago. So you can see here, this is actually the kind of amendment mixture. This is the drill rigs. This is, we mixed the zero valent iron and the carbon amendments in these super sacks and did like an inline mixing system, which you can see here, sort of, I guess not very good. But, and then the, using a drill rig, we essentially inject through a high-pressure slurry that amendment into the ground. So it was an interesting year last year because we had so much snow and it's such high water, but we were able to get it in the ground. So March, we installed the bore holes. We also installed some additional monitoring wells so that we could assess the impacts of the injections. And again, in April, we did the slurry injections. We did two bore holes and injected kind of 16, in 16 areas within those bore holes. We injected 388,000 pounds of ZBI, 8,800 pounds of a biological amendment, and then some bioagmentation culture. And that's a culture that, where the microorganisms that can degrade these contaminants have been grown, and then we inject those into the ground along with the amendments. Since then, we've done groundwater monitoring with geochemical and contaminant parameters to look at the effect of those injections, and we have one, three, and six-month sample data that I'm going to show you today. So, primary objectives of the pilot, first, we just wanted to show this, this type of injection works. It's very complicated. This system is complicated, so it really is looking at the feasibility of doing this. Wanted to verify that we're able to get complete degradation of these chemicals in situ and get the design parameters, again, to kind of go through the alternatives evaluation. So I'm gonna go through a movie. So again, this is that same sort of cross-sectional view here. This is the contaminant plume before we did the injections. These little black concentric circles are the injection bore holes and the injection material and kind of our estimate of how far we got that material out into the formation. And then here's a little sneak peek. This is our post-pilot injection results. So, let me show. So, this is a movie we kind of created. We have a 3D model. We've done a lot of visualization and hydraulic modeling. The green outline is the landfill. The yellow outline is the cell one waste area. For reference, that purple square is a football field, so you get a sense of just the scale of the waste area. Again, most of the contaminants are leaching down through the throat of this canyon. This is the high-concentration contaminant plume that's discharging or emanating and kind of migrating under. That's the extent of the plume pre-injections, and this is what the plume looks like now, after six months of monitoring. So we'll kind of go into cross-section view so that you can see what's happening. Again, the black is the injection process or where we injected, and then again, sort of pre-injection and then post-injection. So we've seen a real impact sort of adjacent to the injection, but it also gives you a sense of where groundwater is flowing, because what happens is that groundwater flows through that treatment. Those contaminants are degraded. And so you can see that the groundwater flow is actually occurring sort of across the canyon first and then down, and that's really what we're saying. So I'm kind of, we're kind of spinning it around to give you just a perspective. Again, these are just all of our injections here. This is before, before the injection process, and then we'll spin it around again so that you can see the effect. So we have seen a very substantive reduction in contaminant concentrations. We've actually seen about a 90 to 95% reduction in concentrations within that six months. We have seen that effect both cross-gradient of our injection process, and now we're actually seeing it down gradient in a lot of the wells that are actually on the boundary of the landfill property. And so overall, we are actually quite pleased with these results and the timeline that we've really seen the results, which in some cases is actually much faster even than we expected. So, this looks very promising. We're continuing to monitor the effect of this. We're gonna present these data to Idaho DEQ next, or end of this month, I think it's the 28th of March. And, and then we'll discuss sort of the next steps. According to our consent order, once we feel like we have a good conceptual site model, we've done a lot of characterization of the site at work and the pilot, then we move into what an alternatives evaluation. That's where we really kind of dig into the details of how can we mitigate this plume better, faster, cheaper than what has been done historically. All right. Any questions about that before we move into the off-site plume?
Are you thinking that you might have to extend your, your test wells a certain direction to catch the edge of that, or are you comfortable with where you're at?
Let's go back. That's exactly right. And the great thing about this actually is that in our, the conceptual design, which we did, first thing we want to do is just make sure the alternatives that we're looking at would make sense or be cost-effective. So we did kind of an initial cost assessment first, say, yeah, we think this works. And the design that we did for that had a lot more injection points in it, so it was quite a lot more expensive. Based on these data, so we've got the two here, so if you look at how these two injection points affected the contaminant plume, right, you can kind of see where we're missing. So what we would look at is to potentially do another couple of injection points here, and we think, is that, we think this is the, actually the flow path.
They'll take care of that one.
Yep. So, so yes. The great thing about this is that, you know, again, we get the tracer tests. We can really kind of see what the effect is when you have a big impact, like the amendments and the chemistry, we can really see what's happening down gradient, and that tells us where the flow paths are.
How often do you have to refill the gradients for the injection?
So, the amendment that we've used in this case, the zero-valent iron amendments are expected, especially in this system, because it's pretty low flow to last five to 10 years. And then you would have to just periodically go in and reject just some soluble amendments to kind of re-up it and keep it reducing long enough. So when we look at kind of long-term operations and maintenance of a system like this, it is much, much easier than operating and maintaining a pump and treat system. So that is definitely, it's a, you know, upfront capital cost, but at this point, the pump and treat system is so old, it's about 24 years old. Really, the county's looking at having to do, you know, probably some major upgrades to continue to operate that for the next 20 years. So it's a good point to really think about, you know, what's a, is that what the county wants to continue with, or there's other technologies like this one that would be better for that long-term operations and maintenance. All right. All right, any other questions about that? So of course, the other kind of critical factor for the county is the off-site contaminant plume that's impacting the potable supply wells. So this is a map that just shows some of the potable wells that have been historically, so the landfills up here, this is the landfill property, these are the wells that have historically been operated. This plot here has the concentrations of contaminants across all of those potable wells over time. And one of the things that you can see is that overall, there has been a decline, but in particular, this is kind of the last, you know, six or seven years. You know, we are now starting to see some significant reductions. And in general, if you look at the colors of the squares here, the color designation indicates what's happening with the trend, and all of the concentration trends in those potable wells are declining. So that tells us the concentrations are really coming down, are retracting the plume back onto the landfill property. And in fact, there's only, as of last year, two wells that exceeded the MCL, and it was just barely above the MCL, like, you know, seven or eight micrograms per liter of TCE, and the MCL is five. So we think, you know, we will be able to show that we're bringing those potable wells into compliance, you know, in the next year or two. We're hopeful this year, especially with those positive results as we got with the pilot test. All right, and that concludes our presentation. So we're hoping for any other questions or discussion.
I think that's some of the best news we've heard about this process.
Yeah.
Is it ever going to end?
That is a great question. So in this case, because the source is the landfill and it's so large, we do have the data, and we have been looking at what's actually in the cell one waste area. We've been doing that because they have a landfill gas system that's present. So we sample those landfill gas wells to see, because it's pulling vapor, and the contaminants that we're looking at, the chlorinated solvents, are volatile, so they actually come out in the landfill gas. So we can measure kind of across, and we can see where there are significant amounts of chlorinateds. So we know relatively where in the waste area we have more impacts, but it's big. And it's still, you know, multiple acres in size, it's like 80 or 90 feet deep, so it's, the focus is to, one, prevent water from migrating through that leaching area. That really is the critical factor, because a lot of the contamination is occurring through leaching. So managing stormwater, making sure the cell one cap is working, making sure you don't have other sources of water that kind of infiltrating through that leach, you know, so that you can just keep it from getting in the water to begin with. That's kind of the highest priority. Two is managing water that's up gradient of, like, the treatment system in this case. So you're just minimizing the amount of water that you have to address in the system. So that's kind of the second component. And we've been looking at, we know Fort Hawkeye Canyon Creek is actually infiltrating a lot of the year into the groundwater system, and so we're looking at options to just keep that from happening, at least until it gets down gradient. And then third is to do active treatment like this, where you're actually, you know, mitigating the contaminant plume. So first is to, you know, keep things from getting contaminated in the first place, and then second is to mitigate. The operation and maintenance are going to be required for a really long time, though. And that's really why we're looking at transitioning to systems that are much easier and less costly to operate in the long term. And so it's likely it'll have to continue for, you know, the foreseeable future, but we think there are better ways to do it that'll be more cost-effective.
No pressure, Dylan.
Just pour concrete, mull holes, holes every time.
It's all in the factory, running around.
Pretty much.
Yeah, it's spring-fed. And so there is a base flow that runs year-round. Now, the flows vary quite a lot between the spring, last year in particular was a bumper year for runoff, because we had so much snow. So we had quite a bit more flow through the system last year than normal. And we actually did some infiltration testing this last year, and base flows, we think, just the spring-fed base flow that's occurring in Fort Hawkeye Canyon Creek is about 40 GPM. You know, so that's where the base flow, and then it goes up from there based on the spring runoffs increase that way.
So with a higher flow, is there more dilution or just more contamination?
So it can happen both ways. It's just infiltration, like, up gradient, and that's coming through, it'll dilute it. But Fort Hawkeye Canyon Creek in particular, where it's infiltrating, is actually adjacent to the waste area. So then if, you know, the water is migrating and getting contaminated, then it will, you know, either sustain the concentrations, even though you have much higher flows, or it'll increase the concentrations. So depending on what's happening, it could go both ways.
Other questions?
No, that was pretty good.
Well, I saw a little bit of light, glimmer.
Yeah, very exciting. We're very excited to get the relevant spring data. Now we're sort of stepping out, because like I said, we're really seeing the effect at the wells that are on the landfill boundary, and now we're stepping out and really hoping we see the effect at those off-site potable wells. It's kind of the next key, so.
So when you meet with DEQ, would you let us know? Make sure, and see if we can attend?
Yes, it's scheduled for the 28th. So we can forward you that meeting invite.
Okay.
I believe it's at 8:30, but I can get it to you.
Thank you.
This month?
This month, yep. And it'll just be up at the landfill and their meeting room there.
It's Thursday. That might be important, maybe you worked it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you representing Jordan?
Yes.
All right, Jason?
So this is a request to send the laptop that Steve uses to upgrade our elections results to ESNS for a cybersecurity update. They do all of these updates on these computers physically. There's nothing that transfers over to Internet, and so we have to ship the computer to them. And this, the update has been approved and vetted through the Secretary of State's office, and it's been tested through the INL, so all of those processes for this particular update this year for the elections. That's all it is.
Questions? Where's this company out of?
They, they have several locations. I'm not sure where they have to send the computer, either to Texas or Ohio for this one. They do a lot of, their base of operations is in Ohio, but they do some of these at their facility in Texas. I can't remember.
Do we just have the one laptop that is used?
Yeah.
We don't have a backup for that if something goes wrong?
Nope. It's just that one computer.
Okay. How is this data transmitted?
So then, this is, this is the computer that we take the encrypted memory cards off of the DS450s and plug it into this computer, and that's the program that reads the information. And then it's uploaded to the Secretary of State's website for election results, but we have the hard numbers always. So if some, if someone were to hack it, and that's what we're trying to stop, we still have the data. So if they messed with the numbers, we still have the paper ballots, we still have all the real results, and we would immediately see that what had transferred onto the Secretary of State's website didn't match our results. And then there's protocols for what to do in that situation, where we'd contact Guillermo on election night and let him know, and they would immediately take them down, so.
Okay.
No, that's, that's a big item. I want that computer verified, secure.
Yeah. They do this periodically, and we've already upgraded all of the other equipment to this new operating level for this year.
How, how old is this computer? Are we going to upgrade it in the next couple of years, or is this?
Yeah, it's, it's fairly new.
It's fairly new.
Yeah, we, we keep them, that one updated. I can't remember, it's, I think it's two or three years old.
Okay.
And this is the only thing that it does. It's, it's used twice a year.
Okay.
Not, and it's used for this one purpose, that's it.
So it's not a real speed, doesn't need to be a real speed demon, just?
No.
Okay. Okay, I have no problem with this. Ms. Chairadmu, we approve the request for sending the laptop as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Christie.
Mr. Plaza, call controller. First item I have for the board is to provide a quick discussion about potential league payouts for public defenders. We were hoping when we set the FY '24 budget that the state would cover somehow vacation sick and comp payouts for the public defender staff. That is not what's currently in legislation. Current legislation, the Dave Martinez shared with me, is they're going to transfer over 40 hours of vacation, however, we'll have to give the state the dollar equivalent of that, and then we'll be able to...
I'm sorry, we'll have to what?
We'll have to give the state the dollar equivalent of that.
Forty hours?
Yeah. Plus, we have to pay out the rest of it and cover it within our budget.
So basically, we pay for everything?
Yeah, and we have no subsidy dollars.
Oh, yeah, there's more.
We have, we have no additional living capacity to cover this. The state's barely giving us enough money to cover what we need, so we're going to be on the hook, and that includes the grant, too. So we're going to be on the hook for about $270,000 in the public defender's office, just under $12,000 in the Office of Conflict, and $89,000 in the grants. I have a, I tried setting a meeting up with Dave, he's been busy, and I haven't had a chance to meet with him, to see if there's a way we can try to cover it with existing dollars. That would be my ultimate goal, is to see if we can cover it within a budget. He does have some vacant attorney positions, where hopefully we can absorb some of that. However, he is actively continuing to try and hire, so we would only be able to use dollars that have not been spent to date. The Office of Conflict is actually the only one that we can cover the funds. And the grant, there's a potential, but if we use workload monies, we'll have to ask the PD's office, the state PD's office, to do a reallocation of funds to cover this. So that's the bad news, and...
No, there's more.
Well, there's more.
Okay.
But, that's just mine.
Yeah, don't stop there.
But I'm going to continue to work with Dave, see if we can find funds to cover this. If not, there's a potential we could possibly have some unanticipated excess sales tax money, where I could open the budget to cover it. So we just need to continue to monitor it and see how we can cover it.
Now, this is currently, based on what's been passed so far, this is...
It hasn't passed yet, to my knowledge.
Well, so, so they're still debating this in the legislature.
Well, but the current bill doesn't have any help for us at all, I believe.
So the current bill that the legislature's looking at?
It just has the 40 hours that we pay for. But I wanted this on your radar so that you could reach out to the state, tell them that they claimed they would have this covered, and now they've got us on the hook for...
What bill is that?
It is House Bill 593. But the total amount we're on the hook for is, oh shoot, 307,000 plus benefits, so $360,000.
That's total?
Yeah. Except, Commissioner Moser came to see me about rent, and I'll let him add to the pile.
Well, Jeff talked with Coeur d'Alene or with Cootney County, and us and Cootney County are the only ones that have the rent facilities right now for, for them. And talking with Seth, we are responsible for that rent until 29th.
Which is roughly $160,000 to $200,000 a year for the next five years.
And the other part behind that is, in talking with Christie, right now, that rent's paid by the state through grants. So the state's already paying for it through their grants, but now they want us to come back and...
Unless by some crazy chance, they'll continue to have a grant to pay for that. I have no, I don't know anything about that.
Yeah. Let's, let's buy the building and raise the rent and charge the state.
There you go.
Cross my mind, actually.
I'm serious.
So give it to your legislators, please. Any questions on that?
They still haven't, what, okayed the director? They haven't voted on that yet. So, and I don't know how much of this is coming from the director, or how much is just coming from, nobody thought about these things, or they're just trying to pass them by?
The rent was a concession that had to be made to get this transition to the state. So in talking to Seth, that was a concession made to get it up there, and a concession made, because it didn't impact too many counties.
Right.
But those of us that do impact, it's a good impact, so.
Yeah. Us and Cootney?
Yeah.
That's all I have on that one. The next item I have is just a quick ARPA update to try to keep the board as current as possible on where we're at. I emailed the sheets out, plus it's in the packet. We do have two completed projects, the jail roof and the mosquito truck. Those items are now done.
The jail roof is really done? That's awesome.
The positive those also share are that we also have final numbers on those projects, so we're closer to a better bottom line of funds that are available for allocation. On the grandstands, that bid did come in a lot higher, or a lot lower than anticipated. Scott was okay with reducing, well, Scott and Dan Kendall were both okay with possibly reducing what we have in the budget for that, down to $60,000. They felt that would still give plenty of funds. They think it's actually going to come in around 50, but the 60 would add that extra little buffer in case they needed it. I just need your permission to reduce that if you would like.
I'm good with that.
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I would hesitate right now, because I just started on the project. I mean, they got their bid on the materials and stuff, but, and that was 40,000, 50,000? No, it was 32,000, okay.
So that still leaves...
Yeah, I, we'll still, yeah. I'm good with that. Like I say, I just, I don't want to short-change something, just because we just barely got started on, I mean...
We still have on the bottom line $333,000 that's not been allotted, so if something did happen in the next little bit, but we do have to have a final decision by April 7th.
We will.
So, do you want me to just put it at 100?
Well, I, I like, you're going to reduce it by 60, Greg?
260.
260.
260. I don't see any problem with that based on the, you know, how much of a cushion you have.
When Scott and I talked, he said 50, and I said 60, trying to make sure they have sufficient...
That would be okay with me.
Like I say, I'm good with it, just when we barely start a project, I want to, want to make sure that we're covered. I don't want to start short-changing here and there.
Then, next, a quick discussion I wanted to have is still needing some scope of work projects. We've got the forensic pathology that we still don't have, although that is coming in the next week or two. The corner cooler, that was budgeted at 100,000, that's going to not be 100,000, they're going to need additional funds if that's going to be a project that you do. The Sixth Street, I received an email from Shanda and Dan... The Sixth Street, I received an email from Shanda and Dan this morning at 9:00, and 750 should be fine for that. However, I will need to look at the drawings and get with Brian Trammell to see if any of those items will fit within an expenditure category, because we do still need $322,000 and change in an expenditure category, or we'll have to cut something. We think we, something should fall within probably stormwater. So we'll look at that in a little bit more detail as soon as I can get with Brian and get that information.
Both stormwater and handicap accessibility, I think, should have something on that Sixth Street.
Brian and I will look at it, provide recommendations to board, and the board can decide what they would like us to do. We still need scope of work on the ISP kids, either replacement, remodel, how that's gonna move forward. And then we have an update on the cameras. The event center's gonna need about $102,000. Public works gonna need between 71 and 90, so we could probably drop those cameras, consolidate that 400,000, and drop it down to 200,000.
Yeah. And that one I won't hold off on, because talking about the fair and different areas in McCam, or down in Downey, I think that, that's still, they haven't really been included, and we just had vandalism down there. If we're gonna put these new buildings down there, there should be some security that goes in with these new buildings unstuck, in my opinion. I think that that's...
So I'll keep that at 400,000. Last item is the verbiage buildings. That meeting was moved to 327, so we are not going to have that information until, hopefully, when I do the next update in two weeks. And that's if I get a phone call that night, or before I have time to put information on here, so that might be another verbal.
Yeah, I visited with Jamie last night on that, too. Dan, I thought he might be here, but Dan went down and looked, and he says the one building just needs tore down. And the other one, to structure, if it has any sentimental value, you'll have to put a new roof and four new walls in anyway. So it's, it'd be just as easy to tear it down. So honestly, because of, we have the bid openings and stuff on the forensic this afternoon, or at 11:00, we, I'd like to meet next week again, next Thursday, because we're gonna have some more information. And I think it's vital that we, we know, and a week can make a difference to me right now, where we're at.
100% agree. If you look at the bottom of the ARPA project spreadsheet, it shows 333,000 still to be allocated. If I take 65 out of the grandstands, that puts that at 398,000. The next numbers are what we have in expenditure category items, the general county revenues, that's at $10,322,000. That's where the number in red to the right of that is what I need to get designated to allocate, or expenditure category line item.
So for next week, I'd like us, well, one will know what's going on in forensic. So come with ideas and projects, and we'll finalize some of them, those things. I mean, those that have already been suggested, or any, anything new. I'd like us to, next week, have a game plan, a little bit.
On the backup list, Dan Kendall did ask me to take off the sewer line for the annex, that's no longer needed. He had the company that was gonna do the sleeve that had been talked about previously came in, reran the cameras, and the line's finally... He's not sure what the other individual was seeing or doing, but you can remove that 100,000 off that list. I'd already submitted this to the agenda request, so that's why I didn't update it. The cooler in parking area, the recommendation of 200,000 is actually, he said you should probably take that up to 275,000, if that's gonna be an option that you wanna follow up on.
Where is this at? Which one?
On the backup list, the second page.
Under which category?
The corners, cooler in parking area. It's the second, third item, third item on the top.
So you think we have to take that up to 270, what did you say?
275. 275.
Okay.
Would be Dan's recommendation, just to make sure that it's covered and has everything it needs.
Uh-huh. What about the, can I go back up to the first page? The remodel about above elections?
We still need the scope of work on that.
I don't think that's a go.
Yeah, it was taken off.
But I thought we were gonna keep the money, just in case we moved to the kids and needed to find a...
It's not feasible, okay. My opinion right now, after some discussions, that is not feasible at the moment. There's some serious issues that would have to be overcome that we're not ready to overcome, so I think that might be dumped down into the...
And I'm still not against building something over here. So, I'm still, I know you don't wanna do anything up here, but I'm still not against doing something for...
To get them out of there.
To get them out of that place.
I agree.
And that, that's, that's why I'd say the discussion...
Well, the discussion, obviously, we're gonna have to talk about security and all that kind of stuff. That's a major concern.
Yeah. And that's why, somewhere within our campus, is, is still a discussion that I think that is...
So you wanna leave that in for now?
I want to earmark that, that money for that group, right now, to say, these kids, I'm still concerned about where they're going to school.
Would that come up, would that be moved into an anticipated project to discuss next week, a backup project?
Yes.
So Christie, did you catch that?
Yeah.
So we're moving the 1.2 million to next week's backup.
That's what I say, we'll find out a lot more this afternoon, or at 11:00.
Right.
And I think that it, these, these are combinations of, okay, there's still some major projects that we could divert to, depending on...
But remodel above elections, that's out.
I'll move that to the backup list and relabel it.
Okay.
As ISP kids.
All right.
And then on the countywide, Kyle clarified that on the buyout current leases without Ribbon Bridge, that 257, he said that was for only the FY '25 lease payouts. So I think we take that off, and if you want to...
Where are you at now? Now I'm lost again.
At the very bottom.
Oh.
Very bottom.
Countywide, oh, okay, okay. I see that. So please, I'm sorry, repeat that, because I was lost.
He said that was for the FY '25 payouts.
The 257?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can work on getting numbers if you think it's an option to buy out leases, or Shanda can get that information. I just pulled my, the numbers off my financials, since I have to do that reporting, but if you want, I can include that on there, or we can not use that as an option.
Okay.
Just let me know. But that would save ongoing dollars.
That's what I think, because we can prepare it a little better next week. We can highlight or pick some projects that we can move forward on.
Do you want me to update the backup plan and then forward it to you, so that you have that to start preparing?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'll do both the spreadsheets.
I appreciate all that you're doing on that side today. Talks, the clock is ticking.
Clock's up.
I don't wanna give any money back to anybody. With that being said...